All right, you guys ready?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Now call the special budget workshop to order for July twenty second, four P M. Please rise the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this day. Father, we ask that you grant us wisdom today, Father, as to help us make all these decisions. Father, help us make decisions according to your will, Father.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as a problem.
You'll please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Member McGuire here. Member McCure here. Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
The other two council members give a reason not here.
I've not heard from them.
Okay. Very good. I'm number four. This will be fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five. It's be a draft general fund discussion. Melody?
Yes, I also have the infrastructure fund and the C D B G funds ready if we get that far.
Yes, ma'am.
So our, the first slide that you see is the summary budget. Our total budget for the general fund, if passed, is seventeen million, five hundred and one thousand dollars. The budget factors for this budget, I've calculated the millage rate at five mills. If we go with the current millage rate, it's about two hundred and seventy six thousand less. We will use one point five million from return on investment in the water sewer fund. We will use five hundred and thirty four thousand from reserves for capital purchases. And our operating revenue is budgeted at seven million, seven hundred and eighty eight thousand, which is two hundred and eighteen thousand or three percent over last year.
Just wanted to let the record show, Councilman Bernard is now with us.
Our operating expenses, expenses are budgeted at about two point three million or eight hundred thousand over last year's budget, and that is directly related to the COLA increase and increases in our health insurance and our liability insurance and the sheriff's office contract. The cost of living adjustment is of three percent is a hundred and eighty nine thousand salaries and benefits citywide. We had a estimated health insurance increase of fifteen percent, which would be a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. We had a thirty two percent workers' comp and property liability insurance increase, which is approximately two hundred and fifty seven thousand citywide. A five percent estimated increase in the sheriff's office contract, and we have five funded but vacant positions.
I have a question. Can I ask a question right now?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Um, the thirty two percent workers' comp increase for the property and liability, is that for claims that have been done?
I think it's just, I'm gonna defer to.
It's overall claims, history, ratio, they, they look at everything, compare us.
So which is the majority, the claims on the liability insurance or the work comp claims?
I'd, I'd have to look it up. I would, I would say probably liability, but they're, they're close, both of them.
Okay.
To get you an actual, I could bring that back.
Didn't the overall interest rates go up this year around twenty two percent or twenty something percent? It was in the low twenties, wasn't it? I don't know, as a nation whole, I think it was twenty something percent. So it's probably roughly ten percent differences.
And that's just an estimate. We don't have the actual renewal yet.
We're, we're in the process of the renewal now.
All right. Chris, you want me to take that? Okay, go forward to number four, please. This just shows our total operating budget and the percentage of personnel costs and operating costs. So your total personnel costs are forty eight percent and operating is fifty two percent. I also reached out to a couple of other cities and just to see how much their ad valorem revenue was part of their budget. So you see most of them, the average is about forty seven percent, and we are at twenty three percent. So our total general fund revenues are eight million, four hundred and eighty eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty, and we have a return on investment of approximately one point five million. This slide just shows the each revenue as a percentage. Our taxable value this year went up to four hundred and sixty million. It was an increase of twenty eight million, seven hundred and seventy eight thousand. Our ad valorem, as I said, I've budgeted at five mills. And our ad valorem tax would come in at two million, one hundred and eighty five thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars, or an increase of four hundred and forty nine thousand. This graph just shows the millage rates in the county and where we stand. Our sales and use tax consists of local option gas tax and fire insurance premium tax for a total of four hundred and eighty two thousand. Local option gas taxes are budgeted at four hundred and thirty thousand, same as last year. Fire insurance premium is budgeted at fifty two thousand, an increase of twelve thousand. We don't have the police pension insurance premium tax any longer. Franchise fees are budgeted at eight hundred and fifty seven thousand or a thirty eight thousand increase over last year. Electric franchise fees are budgeted at eight hundred and forty thousand, an increase of forty thousand over last year. Gas franchise fees budgeted at seventeen thousand, it's a decrease of two thousand. Utility service taxes, I'm sorry, this is franchise fees, that's incorrect. Our total franchise fees are budgeted at one million, two hundred and ninety one thousand. Electric utility tax is budgeted at eight hundred and eighty thousand. Same as last year. Water utility tax is the same as last year, a hundred and forty thousand. Gas utility tax, thirty one thousand or an increase of six thousand. Communication service tax, two hundred and forty thousand or an increase of twenty two thousand. Local business tax remains the same at thirty two thousand. Licenses, permits and fees remain the same at two hundred. Intergovernmental revenues are budgeted at two million, two hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. Half set sales tax is the same as last year at seven hundred and sixteen thousand. Eight cent sales tax is the same as last year at a hundred and seven thousand. Mobile home fees increased one thousand to six thousand dollars. Alcohol beverage license tax is the same at ten thousand, two hundred. Revenue sharing remains the same at four hundred and forty thousand. Firefighter supplemental compensation is the same as last year at eighteen thousand, eighteen hundred. D O T highway lighting contract is eighty six thousand, one hundred and thirty or an increase of two thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. The D O T right away contract is the same as last year at thirty eight thousand, six hundred and fifty. Highlands County Recreation Grant is the same as last year at one hundred and twenty five thousand. Charges for services are budgeted at one million, twenty nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty. Zoning fees remain the same as last year, seven thousand, five hundred and fifty. Fire inspections, the same as last year, one thousand, one hundred and fifty. Fire assessment fees remain the same at one million, one thousand, one hundred and sixty. Code enforcement fees remain the same at twenty thousand. Fines and forfeitures are budgeted at twenty thousand, six hundred. Court fines are down four hundred at nineteen thousand. Police education funds budgeted at one thousand, down five hundred. Restitution remains the same at six hundred. Other miscellaneous revenues are budgeted at three hundred and fifty nine thousand, three hundred. Interest income remains the same at three hundred thousand. Rental of government buildings is down twenty five thousand to fifty five thousand, two hundred. That's related to the community center. Miscellaneous revenues budgeted at forty one hundred, up a hundred. And return on investments is budgeted at one million, five hundred, six thousand, three fifty, a decrease of seventy six thousand, three hundred and ninety. And that's your revenues.
Okay, any questions?
I do have one question on the code enforcement. I'm just curious what the big spike was a few years ago. Is that just where we increased the fees?
I think that there was probably a large fine that was paid off in twenty.
Yeah, those, those fees have to do with when somebody pays off their code enforcement lien. Like if they're trying to sell the property and it goes through title, they have to have that lien paid off before they can, so that's really gonna ebb and flow. It's gonna fluctuate from year to year.
So is, is that because we, we're still giving out the fines, people are just not paying them, or are the fines not getting assessed, or?
Oh, they're getting assessed, they're just not being paid. Majority of our fines do not get paid until somebody tries to sell the property. And then they don't have a choice because it goes to title and they're not gonna give financing until that lien is either paid off or paid off. And that's when you see the lien reductions come in front of you in city council hearings.
Is our list growing or shrinking?
I think right now we're over three hundred. The last I checked on B S and A, it's right around three hundred and thirty. I would say it's probably growing. I don't see, unless somebody sells their property, they, they know they don't have to pay it. I mean, it follows them and it could, it could have an adverse effect on their credit if they're trying to buy something when they do a public records check, but they don't, they don't pay it unless they have to, and it's good for twenty years.
Any other questions? Seeing none, please proceed.
Okay, our total general fund expenses are budgeted at nine million, two ninety five, two hundred and ninety five thousand, two hundred and ten dollars, and there's four categories in the general fund expenses. They are general government, public safety, transportation and culture and recreation. This chart just shows your, by percentage, of course, public safety is the big one. Within the general government, you have city council, city manager, finance, city attorney and other governmental services. The total of those are budgeted at one million, one hundred and forty one thousand, seven hundred and fifty. So city council is budgeted at eighty four thousand, six hundred and twenty, which is an increase of two thousand, seventy dollars. And this slide will show you exactly where the differences were. If you have any questions. The F R S rate went up. I think to thirteen point six four, it was at thirteen point three seven. That went up in July first. City manager department is budgeted at five hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. It's an increase of twenty eight thousand, one hundred and sixty. And that'll show you your line items if you have any questions.
Who falls, just, that's just city manager period?
No, so there's, there's several employees that are allocated to his department, to that department. So the city clerk is in there, the
Oh, okay.
H R director, part of my salaries in there, I T.
Isn't the admin or the additional secretary that you have upstairs also?
Finance department is budgeted at a hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. It's an increase of twenty thousand, six hundred and fifty. Increase. Oh. So this is the line items that show the difference in each line item?
Is all of the finance salaries being paid for under this line item?
No, because we have, like mine is, we have, all of them actually are allocated between the general fund and water sewer and stormwater. City attorney is budgeted at a hundred and forty six thousand, four hundred. It's a decrease of six hundred and fifty dollars.
I have a question on that one. The travel imperdium of six hundred and fifty dollars, what does that, what does that entail?
That, I'm not sure why. That's always been in the budget throughout the years, but we, nothing's ever been charged against that. But there are on the city attorney's invoices, there is a portion where his travel is, is charged on the bills.
I think he could charge it when he's going to Tallahassee for us or going to some other city for us. He just typically doesn't because usually the conferences that he's going to, he's, would go to it anyways, that sort of thing.
But he does charge for his travel time. To and from. Other governmental services is budgeted at two hundred and sixty four thousand, four hundred, five hundred and sixty dollars for an increase of four hundred and thirty. Public safety includes the police department, fire department, code enforcement and planning and zoning for a total budget of six million, one hundred, ten thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. And again, police is the, the largest. Their budget comes in at two million, eight seventy nine, seven hundred and eighty. It's an increase of a hundred and forty five thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. Fire department's budgeted at two million, six hundred and ninety six thousand, three hundred and thirty for an increase of three hundred and fifty three thousand, five hundred and sixty. Any questions?
No.
Does that amount for the fire department, does that include those vacancies that we haven't filled yet?
Yes.
It's still included in the budget?
Yes, ma'am. Code enforcement is budgeted at four hundred and seventy nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars for an increase of twelve thousand, two hundred and sixty.
The demolition and repairs portion of that budget, eighty two thousand, five hundred. Does that not come from the C R A? Are we actually demoing property straight from this budget?
Some, it depends, right, Randy?
We're trying to use C R A funds as much as possible. That's first choice, obviously, but sometimes it falls outside of that C R A district.
Yeah.
Therefore, we have to use the budget and the amount.
I was just curious how long this amount has been in there and how, how often we actually use it? Just because one project could exceed that.
One project could, I, I, yeah, it's, it's been in there like that. I believe this would be the third consecutive. Yeah, third consecutive year that it's been budgeted at.
Any idea how much of it we typically use?
I don't think we used any of it.
Yeah, that, that, we haven't used any of it.
Yeah.
But again, one project and it's, it's gone.
Yeah. Then on the code enforcement line too, the, the legal fees that we incur whenever we're going after certain properties or trying to bring those into compliance. Where does that show? Is that strictly under the city attorney budget or?
It should be, it should be under ours. I don't, I, I see how that is, but that's, that was born out of the fact that we were gonna start doing some more foreclosures. Because as we're seeing, we just actually got a deed, as I think I mentioned on last meeting, a deed in Lou at five oh four North Lake, that, that in itself was, I think, just shy of ten thousand dollars just for that, and we're upwards of forty thousand on the five properties on the other one. So fifty thousand in foreclosure is sometimes maybe two properties.
And there's no end in sight on that five property?
I'm sorry?
There's no end in sight currently on that five property ordeal?
Uh, yes, actually got a briefing from Ellie the other day, and it's coming up for summary judgment, I believe, at the end of this month. It's been, it's been the gift that keeps giving.
Okay, planning and zoning is budgeted at fifty five thousand or an increase of ten thousand? Yeah. Street department is budgeted at one million, two hundred and ninety six thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars or an increase of ninety nine thousand, four hundred. The decrease in salaries, there was an employee that was moved from from streets to water sewer. And if you have any questions, Jason's prepared to answer.
Jason, you wanna speak to the new things that you're looking at doing with the stormwater? Maintenance and the right away maintenance?
Jason X and Poli Works Director. Yep, we, on our stormwater maintenance, we, we took down, because it was just projects, there really wasn't much money for hardly any money for stormwater maintenance. It was stormwater repairs, so it was all capital projects. And then whenever we did something, we tried to find a way to, to take advantage of that. So what we, what we did was I, I believe the, the amount's almost the same if you put the two together. I just, I think it was, I took that a hundred and twenty thousand, I believe, and on the capital and put eighty towards maintenance, so we can get those things taken care of, like you know, if we're gonna sod an area of a retention pond with Bahier or something along those lines, it's not really a capital project, but something we have to get done for, you know, the water cleanliness. So that's, that's what we did there. Not, not much of a, a change, it's just kinda how you look at it. So it allows us a little bit more flexibility to make some smaller expenditures. After looking out, there are some areas that we need to improve. Even like Lake Tulane, there's some areas where the, the tops of the manholes, they need to get muddered up. So there's some significant projects, but we're, we're accomplishing several different ones. We're taking care of. We did, trying to think, it's Verona. It was an area over where we did sidewalk curbing and all with the storm, stormwater that goes into retention ponds. We're doing plenty of projects with that, but that's, that's the goal, just to continue those projects and with retention pond projects going forward.
So for the right away stuff, are you planning on taking care of more right aways or just more pointed line item to take care of what you're already doing?
It's just on right aways out there and throughout there, like trying to get the plantings right. So in here, budget, what we're trying to do is get our right away plantings. Because as, as you can see, it's wasn't, there's plenty of areas that need work. So we're working on that and, and going forward, trying to make, make the area look better. So we do a little bit at a time. We built a nursery out and that's what we're doing. So when you see it, like a lot of the right away maintenance, that's what it is. There's some in for some sidewalk repairs and trying to take a look and see what we can do with possibly getting a company that's go out there and do some contractual, we give them a couple of blocks and they just go and that we wanna, we wanna work on. It's better than, than saying, you know, across town over here, then they don't really wanna do that. They wanna focus on the section, and I think everyone else can kinda see how we move along and we can get taken care of. Of course, we can address any immediate hazards. But, you know, that's, that's how we're planning on going about it.
Well, I'll just tell you the stuff that I've seen you guys working on lately has been looking better and better every day. So whatever, whatever plan you have in place is definitely working out. So I appreciate it.
That's what we're trying to do. There was one other, you asked, what was, when, before I came up, you said?
Stormwater.
Stormwater and what, what else?
Right away.
Okay, all right, okay.
I was gonna call you last night, I seen a artesian well come out of the middle of a road. Lo and behold, it was, you guys were already working on it this morning, so.
Thank you. Respond quick.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I have a question, sorry. I, I, I noticed your uniform category here. Do, do we ever go out every so often and try to get new quotes for a better price on, on things like uniforms?
Andy does that, our purchasing agent.
How often does he do that?
Every time he orders.
Oh.
That's often enough.
Yep.
Okay, so it's not once a year, we're not held down by a contract or anything?
No.
Okay.
He'll, he's got um a couple, or he's got a company from Frostproof, I think it's called Frostproof Growers that he generally gets uh uniforms from. And then he also goes to Amazon a lot and sees what they have on Amazon.
Okay, so it's not somebody who comes around every single month to replace uniforms? You buy them and give them to the?
Yes.
Okay, okay, got you.
I wanted to mention something on that. Um, some of our staff are split on their uniforms. So some would rather have a different shirt or have uniform cleaning where they liked our sanitation or solid waste employees. So taking that, those clothes home and putting it with the same washer with with the family's clothes. So some of them are looking to look at something different, but it would you be okay if um we had different, if if one section, one division wanted to have a different uniform to another division, would would you all be okay with that? No problem?
Yeah, I mean, I think the overall aesthetics somewhat matches so that people know that's clearly an Avon Park employee wherever they go. But I'd certainly understand what you're saying, that people that work at the sewer plant, or maybe even some of your mechanics or anything, you're getting covered in grease, you know, definitely you don't want to clean that in your own facilities, it's probably a health risk, so.
Might be a button up, something nice, it'll clearly state what the what the job, you know, the name of the city and
Yep.
Name tag.
I wouldn't.
Along those lines, you'd be okay with that? Alright, thanks.
Anything else? Go ahead.
Culture and recreation consists of four departments. Parks, parks, recreation, culture, recreation and community center. The total budget is seven hundred forty six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. And seventy three percent of that is in the parks. And parks is budgeted at five hundred forty five thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars for a ninety nine thousand, seven hundred and forty dollar increase.
I have a question on that, if you don't mind, please. Has anybody thought about us possibly hiring part-time ci- city parks person that goes around and does uh daily, say afternoon checks on it, as well as making somebody have a vehicle out there to make uh people realize certain areas that there's people adults up so some of these parks. That's as well as being able to run recreations, passing out basketballs or things like this. I know years ago, we used to have a recs person. I think they were part-time, I think they mainly were like at the school, come in and they would hit either so many parks or be in a certain park, whatever. I think it's something we should look into for uh, not only so that the kids have something more to do and they have access to more equipment, but also to have uh visibility of of city employee at some of these parks from time to time, whether it's a one park or whether they move around or whatever. So I think that's something I'd like to see us look into.
Well, Jason, why don't you start by giving an overview of what you do now, and if you have any response to uh what Jim said, go ahead.
Chrissy, can you go back a slide, please? So uh I'll 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 go over, okay, for our parks department, what we what we currently have, we have employees that are in there, there's also switch streets and you know, that so there's a certain amount, but they they kind of shift back and forth depending on need, because we don't, we don't have a very large workforce there, so we kind of move move in between. We don't do many recreation, our recreation is put out to River Greens and they handle the 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 mowing with the with the real mowers doing the grass fields and making them look nice. So and I I believe that's where that should be, that's professional in nature, because it's it's hard to to do that type of work and get it right, so you don't have the the wrong grass and wanna. Our, what we have here, just to go over, like to go over this, the a bigger expenditure that was up there, so other contractual services. So some of the things I was taking a look at was uh if we were to get the splash pad, and we're talking about a splash pad or something along those lines. Uh, you know, some of these things require special uh servicing. So that's some of the things that you see there, that if we were to go into that, have somebody take care of that. Um, and that's also with, I think, our water and electricity costs, it went up a little bit. Uh, can you go, can you go to the next slide, please? Another big one here was the mall maintenance. So the mall maintenance on the inside, I have some plans to make that look a lot nicer. Um, I'm I'm currently, I'm not looking at using any kind of CRA money or anything along those lines, so I just want to use that, but I wanted a little bit more. We did uh create, we did a reorganization amongst our team and took some of the employees that were doing some of the right away as far as just mowing, and they were considered streets. But they weren't actually doing too many street project, like it's like repairing potholes, signs, things of that nature. So we kind of split it up to where we had people that we needed doing the mowing and then individuals doing other things like installations, repairing street signs, potholes, whatever it may be uh that we saw that we that we were seeing gaps. That's what, that's what we started to fill in. So that's that's where you see um on our mall maintenance, we got some plans for that. The the ballpark maintenance, it went, it went up, but it it's based off of our our um our actuals. So do you see there, that was an actual expenditure? And for the most part, we we just kept it, I mean, I know we may get into capital here a little bit later. Uh, do we want to go on a, is it, we're gonna do capital later? Okay. Um, but yeah, we're we're just trying to match, because we don't, we don't contract out many things there other than the mowing. But there are some things that we need to take care of as far as the buildings and and whatnot.
So as far as the inspections of the actual play equipment, fields, um courts, nets, things like that, um kind of to Jim's point, I I'm assuming you're referring strictly to the actual, you know, sports related stuff and and balls and, you know, things like that. Wha- what is sort of your inspection process or your regimen for making sure that those courts and everything are in good shape?
Well, we have, right now, we've brought on, when I, when I, when I arrived here, we had uh uh, we had Dave Roberts, he was uh the public works supervisor. Well, he ended up, he left like, he already had something in place, so he had left, basically put in a his notice for two weeks, he was gone a month after, and then just kind of been, you know, plugging and playing, and we brought on you know, to an excellent foreman and a supervisor. So with that, we've been able to see more things. And as I get out and get around, I see it. We do have uh facility personnel that take care of like um, I'll say handyman, but they're facility techs. So they do work, um, like today, they were working on the, in the basement, trying to get those doors right and and replacing the doors. Uh, but they, but their their jobs are to go out and and look at the, look at the area, and if they see anything with the parks, like the park equipment, and if there's any kind of hazards, we go in there and we, you know, we fix it what we can. We had a couple in Donaldson Park where we had some some material, I I think it actually came from council, might have came from council, it was a a request. So we went over and you know, safety that off, made the repair pretty quick, and then got it back up and uh usable for the for the kids. Uh, but that's, we, it's kind of like an all hands on deck, but if you're assigned to that area then, and you see something, you say something about it. Otherwise, we do have the facility techs that are uh assigned to certain buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And they take a look at it. The parks, it's not so much, usually it gets reported. That's, that's where that is, I don't.
So do you see a a need, in your opinion, for a a person that would go around and and check all the parks every day, or?
I think um I think now that we have the staff on that 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 we have now, I think when we get a good handle, then we'll be able to have those inspections in between. Because one of the positions I'm looking at is 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 um there's some employees, we we had some interviews, had some really good employees that came forward, and I think amongst what I'm proposing and the individuals we have on staff now, I think they'll be able to see all that. Right, uh, you know, when I, for a long time we had a supervisor, a foreman, and then just kind of going out and watching over sixteen, seventeen people. And the span of control wasn't there. So what we're trying to do is come down from a supervisor, branch out, then then put like a foreman over a group of, say, eight. And then take care of it that way, and and then put, you know, make sure they're doing their job, but then see all those smaller things that that they may not see, because some of them kind of get that tunnel vision. And they can focus on it, and I think they'll be able to take care of that and and pick up some additional. You know, make the repairs as needed, see this before it comes to us from the public. It's our goal to be uh proactive instead of reactive, but.
Jim, did that speak to your point, or were you talking about something different?
That that covered most of it, but I was actually wanted to know if we would actually have a a parks or rec person that would go around and set up uh things for kids to come to the parks, and they would be there actively helping them supply them with say a basketball, instead of bringing their own basketballs, that we'd have somebody out there, some of the basketball courts on a random range, to pass, you know, you're at the New York City basketball. Or or just make sure that all the parks are maintained. I think just the fact of having some, an adult uh basically being at these parks will be a a great uh addition to the city for uh, not only for service, but also for safety. So uh, I I don't know whether we want to look into having some city employees do, you know, plan events on a regular basis, you know, to uh have tournaments or things like that sort, but uh that's the one thing I was looking at.
The only thing I'm thinking, obviously, is first I've heard of it, but I was wondering if maybe a uh, you know, a group or an organization might be more appropriate, just because if you, even if you had a full-time person, they could only be in one spot at one time, right?
No, I I agree.
Yes, I don't know who exactly, but if there's an organization that had some volunteers, I mean, I think that would probably get a lot more done.
Yeah, I I was thinking maybe too, if we could get some like high school juniors or seniors that would be willing to uh you know, get some uh workable hours in there, which will go towards uh the resumes for college and so on and so forth, as volunteers. I thought that would be a possible idea also.
We'll keep our eyes out for an organization, huh?
Okay, thank you.
But in the future, we will need maybe somebody to be responsible for the pickleball equip, or I mean, I guess if we have equipment, but to open up the gates and to make sure the.
That's why, if you remember those conversations, they were talking about the um shuffleboard court organization. We're kind of looking.
To do it, or?
Well, that's just what was discussed, but you know, you're right, eventually, if it gets large enough and there's enough people, you have to have a person there, but it's just a matter of when is that appropriate, or when is it a waste of money?
So I I do have a question between the ballpark maintenance.
Okay.
And specifically listing each field or each ballpark separately. Can you, you might have already explained it, I don't know, but I was just curious what the difference between that is.
Why, why is it is like that? I didn't, I didn't very express, I didn't, I didn't change, change it up, I got it, yeah, yeah.
Asking why is it listed as ballpark maintenance, and then a couple lines down, all of our ballparks listed.
Because this, I think this is specifically for the the mo- the fields, mowing of the fields. So it's more for River Greens, it's the professional, professional service, what they call it.
Mowing, fertilizing.
Mower fertilizing, yeah.
Yeah, and then the others probably for the.
Because, because they, because they do the football field, then they do baseball field. So instead of just saying football, baseball field, man, they just call it ballpark maintenance.
They mark the lines and things like that, too.
Yeah.
So I have one question about that. Um, Randy, I thought you had mentioned a couple of years ago that we charge like fees to these organizations, these ball organizations to come and actually use the fields, but you said we had not actually implemented that in a few years?
I don't, I don't think that was me.
Wasn't you?
No, ma'am.
So have we ever charged, uh, somebody had a conversation about it, I don't remember.
Yeah, I mean, it's been discussed a few times, I don't remember what the parameters were. I know that generally, every time it's been brought up, the agreements that we have with these organizations is fast and loose, put it that way.
Are you talking about maybe somebody coming in and renting, just say the like Anoka, uh, or not like, the the Anoka Avenue softball fields, and then they would pay us to rent them? Is that what they're saying?
I I think that was how the conversation went, but I think they were referring more to like the associations that come in and they use them for a specified period of time, like for their season. Because we're maintaining, I mean, I know we're providing that as as the city, because it brings people in and things like that. I was just curious, I thought I would remember that conversation.
Yes, well, I mean, it's a decent point, and I think at a certain point, it needs to be probably better established, because, you know, we're getting ready to spend quite a bit of money on, you know, MLK Field, we're gonna redo the field, we're gonna redo the area, and we're gonna redo the the box. And so obviously, you don't want that to go to waste, you don't want it to be destroyed tomorrow, so there has to be guidelines in that, and we should have a realistic fund structure that keeps people honest, I think, so.
Right, because there has to be some kind of, who does the scheduling for all of these fields and things like that?
The organizations.
So the organizations work with each other?
Well, they, I mean, they're they're over, the organization's over the field that they're at. So if it's, you know, Dura Martin, you have the the baseball organization, and if it's over at the at the Memorial Field, then it's the other organization that takes care of our our football program. Uh, but the other ones, I I I think the the small like the Anokas are kind of open play, you know, someone will come in and ask, and can they, I think that came through, they wanted to have a softball game out there, but I mean, it's kind of first come, first served. I don't, I don't know what the, I haven't seen the fee on that, but I don't know how much we would make off of it, and I don't think it would cause, for for something like that, the frequency of the events, as you said, I think as we get bigger, that would be something, but now they're kind of
Yeah.
They're they're not used at all. So seeing someone on there, you almost feel good, you know?
Sure. And I'm not sure it's really even a a budget discussion per se, it's just a in general discussion, so could be had at another time.
Well, like, I agree with that, with uh, with the field doing MLK, that's a, that's a really nice feel, we're gonna you know, if you go in, the things that mess those up the most, or it's like, if you get to soccer and you get people playing soccer, then they kind of stay in one area and just rut it up. And then now you gotta go back in and fix it, so um but, but yeah, I I would agree. But for, say, I think right now, Dura Martin and MLK, and for both those, they both are controlled by volunteer groups, I think we're we're in good shape.
Any other questions? Moving on.
The recreation department is budgeted at one hundred thirty three thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, an increase of eleven thousand, four hundred and thirty. The community center increased to fifty four thousand, six hundred and twenty, it's an increase of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Jason, did you want to speak to the lawn maintenance?
Uh, for the community center, it it looks pretty bad out there. I want to put some planning around, make it look a lot better than what it does now. And I can stretch that, make it look better, instead of like, really, really nice, make it look nice. That's the goal.
Yep. Continuous improvement.
Okay, that concludes the operating expenses. So now we're on to the capital improvement plan. The only thing in governmental services is fourteen thousand for timekeeping software that would interact with our BSA module. Police services, these are the vehicles that are in our contract, that would come out of infrastructure fund. Fire department. Chief.
Here we go.
There we go.
Alright, um, so we can go down each of these, but this this next year is a long list. Um. I have at the very end of this, a little presentation, eight minutes long about the ladder truck. Uh, that's probably the biggest one on here. The ladder truck right now is, I think, at one point seven, I can't see that number way over there.
One point seven. One point nine six is what it has on the.
Okay, okay, so originally, we'll we'll get into the presentation a little bit, but that's the the newest truck that I'm proposing is the one point nine. So we'll get into that, we'll get to the presentation. Oh, okay, we're gonna do the presentation right now, I guess. You have any other question? Okay, we'll do this.
Take it away.
Alright, it's like eight minutes. Do you, do you want to hit buttons, or do you want me to hit buttons? So a little just start is our current ladder truck is roughly twenty-three years. Is roughly twenty three years old. We bought it in two thousand, well, it was arrived in two thousand one. I think we bought it in nineteen ninety nine, maybe two thousand. That was before me. All right, so here we go. That's our current truck. Twenty three years old, two thousand one. That that is in use. That was in Hardy County when we took the picture. Uh, we purchased it for four hundred seventy one thousand. Way back then. So as you can see, numbers are going way up. So. Twenty three years old. All right, NFPA talks about that. Anything fifteen years or more. Shouldn't be considered a frontline truck anymore. We're still using it twenty three years. It's well maintained, all that kind of stuff. At twenty years is supposed to go to reserve. Again, we're still using it at twenty three years. So, uh, one of the things that we worry about is hidden rust and corrosion that we don't even know about. We get it inspected every year. But that doesn't mean that stuff isn't happening underneath there. So we get into. Uh, it, you guys can see that picture, that thing dangling underneath the ladder truck. Is how we rescue people off of roofs, which we do. A few times a year. Um, if the, if they're, you know, not able to walk, so like an elderly man is usually what we get off a roof. They get up there. Try to patch a roof or something and have some kind of heart problem or just heat or something like that. That's who we get them down. Is we put them, attach them to the bottom, kind of like a crane and lower them back down. All right, so this is what I would consider the hammer. Of ladder trucks, meaning there is a more efficient, better way. This is the base model, the hundred foot stick. And the reason we're talking a hundred feet is. We have currently four buildings in the city that are thirty five feet or three stories or taller. When we get to five. We have to have a hundred foot. Right now we have seventy five feet. So that's one of the other reasons we're talking about this. We've had a few proposals to talk about. Uh, buildings bigger than three stories. So this is kind of a neat rat. ISO rates our fire department. And fifty percent of the score is based on the, oh, I should say ISO rates the city. And fifty percent of that is just the fire department. The other portion is the water, water supply, communication, all that kind of stuff. All right, so the only benefit to the hundred foot stick is the fact that it costs less. So then we get into the next option, which is that big thing. Both a hundred foot, but that one has a platform on it. So the differences are. When you work with a hundred foot stick, you have to climb up it and climb back down it. We don't move it when people are on it, because now we're talking about a. Hundred foot thing that you're swinging people around on. So with that, they're enclosed in a basket, so it's much more efficient, much safer to people work on. You can get people out of places. Um, that picture I told you about with the person hanging underneath it. This has a way to secure people to the basket if we need to do something and somebody could be up there with them, talking to them. Reassuring or doing something if we need to. So much more safer, efficient way to do it. Uh, and this is kind of what I was meaning. The other one would be the hammer. This would be like the nail gun. You know, they both do the same job. But one's much more efficient at doing that job. So one of the other differences are that stick. Is a, the the one with no basket on the left is a three. Um, section ladder, which means we have to roughly be thirty five feet away from whatever we're trying to get to. Because that's its swing length. But the other one is a, it this, I also should say that this new platform with the bucket. Was reengineered a couple of years ago. That's why it's all kind of new. It is a five section ladder, so you can be within twenty feet of whatever you want to get to. And that, so it it's a little shorter getting into narrow streets. Like we know that if we want to use our ladder on any of Main Street. We have to pull it into the median to actually use it, because we're just too close on the road. We can't use it from there. So this twenty foot would work much better in those short instances. All right, then we get into different options. Now, you guys probably have this in front of you. I can't read that far away, but basically our three options are you can purchase it right now. And so the the idea is if we pay for it now, we have roughly thirty six to forty two months to wait. That's almost four years. So if we order it now, we are a ways away from getting this thing, and that's all trucks everywhere, supply chain issues, all that kind of stuff. So those three options are to purchase it now with city funds. Uh, purchase it next year and not get a discount. Or to purchase it with a loan, which the payment would be deferred, or I'll give you those options in a little bit too. Uh, they do have price increases like that says, one to two percent. One of those is already factored in because that's happening in August for this number that I'm giving you. The next one is, I think, November, yeah, November. So that next one isn't factored into the new price. Okay, so these are the numbers we're talking about. The stick is one point nine. But we get a discount, which you can see in the, in the underneath the tower ladder at the bottom, they give you the same discount for both trucks. A two hundred sixty two thousand and whatever comes off of both trucks. So if we bought the stick right now. It costs one point nine, but if we pay ahead of time, we pay whatever that number is, one point six three seven. If we buy. The better truck, the tower ladder, it's two point two, but we get that same two hundred sixty two thousand off, so it's one point nine six two. Now, those are the prices we pay in October if we pay. Now I'll get to the loan portion in a second. But that's if we pay ahead of time. So if we buy it now and pay on delivery when it shows up. We pay that top number. Okay, does that make sense? Whichever one you pick, if you buy now and pay on delivery, you pay the top number. If you buy now and pay now, you get that discount, which is the second number. And then, like I said, we'll talk about a loan in a minute. All right, so to sell or trade, that's our current ladder truck. Now, there's all kinds of numbers on here. But basically what that shows is our current ladder truck. I hate to say it, but it is practically worthless. They're going to give you. Uh, off to the left, if we were to sell it right now, which we can't because we still need it for a few years. They're going to give us roughly sixty to seventy thousand dollars. Somebody would, you know, th- those are four trucks that are selling. Ours is in good shape, so we might get, you know, seventy, eighty thousand dollars if we sold it right now. Uh, but the one, the column on the right is closer to what we're doing. It would be the equivalent of selling that nineteen ninety eight, because that truck. Is twenty six years old, which is what our truck will be when we get the new truck. Okay, so that they're selling for thirty thousand dollars. So my, my opinion is we shouldn't sell it. We should keep it as a reserve. Which we we can get into later. We don't, we don't have to discuss selling it right now, but I just want to give you the information that trading it in only gives us twenty thousand dollars. I don't think giving rid of a, a big truck like that is worth twenty thousand dollars to us, but that's for you guys to decide.
So who, who? Who buys used fire trucks? Other municipalities or?
Um, sometimes usually, uh, other countries, because they don't have the same standards.
Youtubers.
Yeah, yeah.
But the bottom line is no matter which way we decide to pay for it, we're still going to take four or five years to get it.
Yeah.
Three to four.
Correct, yeah. All right, now we get into why wait or why to buy now? You know, we've kind of talked about all this. We could wait and save money, but all those things are, we're just sort of delaying in the inevitable kind of thing here. So why to buy now? Because prices, they're saying eight to ten percent every year, prices are going up. So that little chart down at the bottom kind of talks, shows numbers of what it will be in two, three, four, five, eight years. And this truck in, I think it's six years, will be another. Million dollars more. It will be a three million dollar truck in six years. So that's the reason for not waiting and the fact that our truck isn't getting any younger. You know, not getting any better, not getting any younger. If we wait two, three years down the road and then decide to buy it. But but we're buying it because our truck is broke. Now we're sitting two, three, four, or five years waiting for a truck because ours is broke. So ours right now isn't doing bad. You know, we put, I think it was forty thousand dollars in this year in maintenance to keep it up. So. It's not doing bad, you know, for maintenance, but it is old.
Do you only take the ladder truck if you have a ladder problem?
Well, yes and no. Um, we take it to all commercial fires. So anytime we go to Walmart or anything on Main Street, we go to that. But then we also use it for what I would think you would consider a ladder problem. You know, if somebody calls and says. Whatever, my husband is up on the roof. And he's, he's having a heart attack, I think. We take the ladder truck for that.
Anything other than just a generic fire call, you take the ladder truck, you're saying?
Um, yeah, yeah, we've used it for other stuff besides fire, getting people out of places. I don't know if you remember the. The one that got shot in the old dump. We used our ladder truck to get them out. The suspect that was fleeing through there.
Okay.
Do you ever use your ladder truck? I'm sorry, this is a dumb question, but do you ever drag your water hose up the truck and attack the fire down by using the ladder truck?
So.
Or is that just in the?
Yes and no. We don't drag the hose up there. It's pre piped. Ladder trucks now have a pipe running up the ladder that waters. So that's one of the other differences. Ours is designed to flow a thousand gallons a minute, our current truck. These, this new tower is designed to do two thousand gallons a minute. So they have a pre pipe running up the ladder. That that was the old, what you were talking about. When you see in, in movies when they're pulling up hose to do that, we have that already plumbed into the the ladder. All right, so this is just a, another one basically saying that it's this, this truck will be here. Way beyond any of us, you know, this, our truck will be twenty seven years old when we're getting rid of it. So, you know, I'm just sort of rounding up to thirty years, but we're looking at roughly twenty fifty five when we buy a new truck, when that thing will be done. So this is just a future purchase for the next. I mean, I'm. I I would love to do the drop, don't get me wrong, but I have three years left. I may be gone when this thing even shows up. So this is a future, definitely future purchase.
A new chief gets a shiny new truck there.
Yeah.
So even if we purchase the truck now, by the time we get the. Was that thunder? Oh, wow. In four to five years, it's already going to be four to five years old, right?
No, 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 it gets assigned that year once it's done. Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be getting a whatever, two thousand twenty four truck.
Okay, you'd be getting the year that we actually got the truck.
Yeah, like ours, we purchased, I think in nineteen ninety nine. I think it was eighteen months back then, but it's a two thousand one truck. So this is talking about the loan numbers. I, again, cannot read those numbers on there, but. Basically, there's a percentage, there's three different options. If you'll see the three columns on the left. Those are showing you, um, I think it's three, five and seven years. And then the three columns on the right are the same exact. Qualifications, but if you defer the payment for a year. So the three on the left, your first payment is due next year. The three on the right, your first payment is due a year after that. That's if we did a loan.
What access to reserves do we have that we could purchase this with?
That's a good question. I think we have plenty.
We have the infrastructure, so any equipment purchased for the fire department could be used out of infrastructure.
Buy it now with reserves, get the stick truck. That's my vote.
And then the sooner we order, the sooner we get it. So instead of waiting till the I call, but we could theoretically order it now.
Yep.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, let me clarify. You're saying the stick truck, do you mean the cheaper of the two or the other, the one with the?
The steeper one, come on. But no, that's just, and the reason why I say that is just. As you said, realistically, there's probably, you know, two to five times a year that you really need to utilize the truck for its true. Purpose. And so can you justify that tower for that? And that's the question. All right, I I see by the way your face looks that, yes, you can just.
Yeah, I mean, the people that are climbing it don't like to climb it. You know, when you have a hundred foot ladder up and over, like City Hall is a good example. City Hall takes every bit of our seventy five foot ladder to get on the roof. So numbers kind of deceiving. You know, you, you think of a hundred foot ladder, you're going to need a ten story building to do it, but that's, that's not really true.
Yeah.
You know, so when you put out a ladder at a hundred feet, somebody's got to climb that thing with holes in it. In gear.
Are they harnessed into it?
Not when you're climbing it, you can't. No, there's no, there's no harness to it. Now you can, if you're working off the end of it, we have a belt to attach. But you're still sort of standing up on a little rung, a hundred feet in the air.
Yeah. So if you had a hundred foot stick, can you go to a five story building? Is that your limitation?
It depends how far away you get. Again, kind of like City Hall, you know, we have to, because of the way the the lot is in parking, we got to park a ways back. So our seventy five foot barely reaches what would be sort of considered the second floor on that. So it depends where you can access and where you can't access.
Sure.
So anything over thirty five feet is considered a high rise. That's what that number comes from.
Questions, comments?
I just have a couple of questions. Um, do you know what kind of warranty we would get on these trucks?
They usually come with like a one year on the main part, but then like a ten year on like the transmission stuff.
Okay, and then usually they say, you know, the more expensive or fancy it or fancier it is, they're more likely. That there's something that's going to go wrong. Do you know maintenance costs between the stick and the tower?
Yeah, I I think they're the same. They're going to get the same engine, all the same kind of stuff. We we test the ladder the same. So I don't think there's a whole lot of difference maintenance between the two. But we've never had a platform truck, but I don't think there's any more maintenance to it.
Okay.
Twenty three years. The one we currently have? Yeah, I started in two thousand one and it had just arrived. Good question. It doesn't break down often because we do a lot of preventative maintenance. Yeah, we had two big things happen with it. The turbo went out, which was like ten thousand, and then we also had the pump fail. Which is a good chunk of that. I had to go to ten eight to get the pump fixed. A three story, we have four. Three, yeah, the the way ISO, the way it's qualified is a high rise building is anything three stories or thirty five feet and taller. And we have four, but part of it is we have been proposed a couple more. I I don't know if any of those will be built. But that will get us into the five. ISO rates us, if we have. Less than five, we can stick with a seventy five foot. So this, this is basically just getting us to a hundred feet. Both of those are a hundred foot options.
A- as you mentioned, the, you said the hundred foot was actually cheaper than the seventy five?
No.
You didn't say that?
No, I don't, I don't think I said that. No, I'm proposing they're both a hundred foot.
Okay.
Both of those. No, it's very hard to get apparatus on a grant. I have looked and looked and it's just nearly impossible. They do buildings and people, but not apparatus. I would have loved to have done that.
Questions, comments? We gotta try to narrow it down and pick out something.
Well, I can't see those numbers from here either, so.
Yeah, well, the, I I can say that the the platform is roughly two hundred fifty thousand dollars more than the stick. But the stick is one point, I don't know, seven. And the platform is one point nine something, one point nine six.
That after discount?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm just assuming we're going to pay for it now. I I mean, that might be a bad assumption. Those are the numbers I'm giving you right now, though. Is we're going to pay for it ahead of time, but we pay on delivery, we don't get that two hundred sixty two thousand dollar discount.
Does our finance director agree that paying for it now is a better financial decision?
I think it's a good idea.
That's what we have done with our past few trucks. That's why I assumed we were doing it now.
So you think pay for it now, not with a loan, just pay for it outright?
Correct. We've got almost eight million in the infrastructure reserves, so eight million almost.
Uh, I I think the sooner we order it and get it aligned, the sooner we'll get it. So maybe if we order it now, instead of most people waiting till the. End of the year, new budget. Maybe we get ours in a couple of months before then, that may save us six months or something to get it before it's somebody else.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's a, and you're talking about keeping it for like another twenty five years.
Correct, that's, yeah.
So it's like a house, you know?
And again, I kind of go back to, and I, Garrett, I respect what you're saying, but this is something that we don't know the future. I think we should be buying the best we can. This is going to be here ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty five years.
Why don't you talk through a few scenarios of where you couldn't do the job? With a ladder, but you could with the tower.
Well, it's not that we can't, it's just it's more efficient.
Or that it would be safer or something.
For some reason, we have a, we just got proposed. Now, again, I I'm not sure this is going to happen. We just got proposed a five story building. If for some reason we have to get multiple people off of that, we would be potentially putting up a ladder, getting somebody down and. Getting people down and then moving the, get, moving the ladder over. This bucket, you can put four people in the bucket. Our ladder, you can't do that. It has a capacity of a thousand pounds. We rough everybody as two hundred fifty pounds per person. So you, in theory, could put it up, get somebody, move it right over, get somebody else, move it right over, get somebody else, where with the stick you cannot.
So then that same firefighter doesn't have to climb that truck five or that ladder five more times.
Correct.
And down.
Correct. Or the people we're trying to get down.
Right.
You know, we might have a 70 year old. We're trying to manage down the ladder.
Yep.
Where that bucket, you can put them in the ladder and, and to put them right on the road, 20 feet away from the truck.
But then you also mentioned that you can get closer to the buildings, which means that you can go up higher because you're closer.
Yeah, it also, yeah, it means that we can work closer. Yeah. It's, I mean, it depends, the, the higher depends on the, you know, the whole building. Where we can park, if there's cars in the way, all that kind of stuff. So yes, that's sort of accurate, but I don't want to misspeak because some buildings we can't get within 10 feet of. You know, we're operating 15, 20 feet away to even get to it.
Do you have any idea, um, everywhere else in the county, what they're purchasing for? I know there's taller buildings elsewhere.
Um, um, if, since you're asking, I wasn't going to say anything because I don't want to compare anybody, but Sebring just bought the same truck this year. Now theirs is, you know, four years away, but they just bought it a couple of months ago. They approved to do this, that platform truck, not the stick, the platform one.
I think they have a few buildings around Lake Jackson that are even more than 10 stories. Now they.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what do they do in a scenario like that?
You try to get people down with ropes if you can, or get people up. Well, I mean, the, the buildings are designed to give you a safe way. So they have staircases, you know, that have two hour security that people can get down further from the fire.
Yeah. Gotcha.
So they would hope people would be evacuating down to lower floors to get people off.
Okay.
Yep. We have two engines and the ladder truck and a brush truck.
That much. I believe in two things. One is safety first. And the second is I believe that the growth of this city, that's the other, the hundred foot option. I mean, I'd rather be safe and have it available and believe that the city is going to have some business of that size hopefully before the time the truck gets here.
Yeah, I have to agree. I, I.
Need new truck, need two trucks.
Two.
I get the difference. The difference is the ladder and the ladder in the bucket, right?
Right. Yeah. Well, no, we don't have a, a, there is, we only have one ladder truck.
One ladder truck. And then this one, if we ordered this new one, it would be a ladder truck with a bucket.
Correct.
And do you believe the city, the size of Avon Park, need two fire trucks?
Well, we get graded for ISO on that. So we would take a, uh, a hit on ISO, which affects everybody's insurance. Insurance, people's homeowners insurance are graded by ISO. So it would have sort of affect everybody. I don't know the calculation on what, I, I honestly think every insurance company grades it sort of differently, but that's how they, that's one of the factors that they come up with homeowners insurance is the ISO rating of the city.
Okay. And my last, I'm sorry, chief. And my last question is, if we, if we were to order this fire truck, um, would we use both of them accordingly? Or will one just sit there and we eventually have to get rid of it? I mean, we would continue to use the other one as well as much as possible?
The current, the ladder truck that we currently have that would go to reserve? No, no, my plan would be to try to sell it. I mean, we wouldn't keep it for another 10 years. It's, so it's getting, what happens to those things is technology changes so much, you know? 28 year old truck, you try to replace a light on that thing and you're not, you're paying $800 to replace a light.
Chief, I thought you just said we wouldn't sell it because we wouldn't hardly get anything for it.
Well, I think we should keep it for a year or two to get us past. This is sort of later on down the road, but I'm also proposing potentially a second fire station at some point. So this potentially could go there for a little bit.
Oh.
But yeah, I think we would eventually sell it. We're not, we're not going to keep it till the wheels fall off of it by any means.
I, I think yeah, some that if you trade it in, you'd get less than if you sold it.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. Us selling it outright, just like a car. When you go to trading a car, they give you $2,000. You can sell on the side of the road for five. So yeah, my goal would be for us to sort of keep it as a reserve, but also trying to sell it once you guys agreed to that part of, of getting, when we got the new one here, you know, moving that to a reserve, but then potentially selling it. We, we definitely don't need both of them.
We definitely wouldn't.
No, we don't need, we wouldn't need a ladder truck and a backup ladder truck. We could keep it. I mean, if for 20, $30,000, we could keep it. But you know, now, now we're getting to, uh, we have a truck that might not go anywhere, like you're saying. It, it would be a backup to a new truck that potentially would sit there for two, three, four years before it got used because the new truck is brand new, probably not breaking down.
Okay. All right. So decisions.
I'm for the ladder truck. I, I just feel like we need to prepare for the future than to be caught.
The ladder or the bucket?
The, the ladder truck, the big, yeah, the, the bucket.
I agree. The tower. Okay, tower to purchase now. Anybody opposed to that?
No, I think in the grand scheme of things over 25 years, I don't think that price difference is that significant in my opinion.
Okay.
Two thousand a year difference.
If it's safer, I mean, I know I would feel safer if my family member was the one having to go up
Amen.
five different times to get people. So.
Okay. So obviously this is a, we're more or less agreeing to a budget. So do you need a motion for that or would you just need?
I don't, can they vote tonight?
So no action can't be taken, but what we can do is take everything that's been discussed today and implement it into the budget for the next session.
So you have your, seems like the board is in favor of purchasing the tower truck now with reserve funds. Okay.
Thank you. You have, uh, oh, we're getting out of the presentation and we'll go back to the other stuff?
Yes.
You don't even have that much room in your firehouse, do you, for all those trucks anyway, do you?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, we, yeah, I mean, I don't want to frame it like this, but we'd have to build another fire station to be able to move a truck out. You know, we only have four bays and we have four trucks. All right. So I'll, I can go through each of these if you want, but some of those first few are just sort of reoccurring. We work on fire hydrants every year. We replace radios.
Ninety-eight.
We replace radios because they're 10 years old and they're not serviceable anymore. Um, bunker gear, same thing. We have a, a lifespan of 10 years on a bunker gear. So we replace a few of those every year. Then, oh man, I can't read those. Okay, sorry.
You've got a new, the new thing is confined space items.
Oh, yep. Okay, so. Yeah, I just want to go to the list. Okay. So, okay, I'm going to go to number four right now. The remodel bathroom, that was on there this past year. We never did it. I was hoping we would get to do this hardening grant. And we would have the opportunity to redo the bathrooms while we were sort of under construction. But we have not started that hardening grant yet. We hope to start in the next couple of days, to be honest with you. So the goal is to roll that money over from last year to do the bathroom project this year. Uh, then we get into number five, the training dummy. We had an old training dummy that was there for 20 years and it's just finally died. Can't drag that thing anymore.
Can't retire.
Yeah. Uh, then confined space item. So this kind of goes into public works. Public works is entering what would be considered confined space. We have never had the equipment to save people out of confined space. So number six is just to purchase that needed equipment for us if they're in a hole and something goes wrong or a confined space. I've talked to the county. The county is an hour away from getting their team together. So that's, I think, important for you guys to know that we are definitely much closer than that. They have a, what they call special operations team. But it's consistent of people that are or can be off duty. So when they have a situation like this, they call in their special operations team and they have to assemble those people together, which they're saying takes about an hour to do. So number six is just items that we would need if some of their items failed, you know?
This wasn't on the budget last year?
That was not.
She's shaking her head.
Confined space, confined space was not, no.
Okay.
Uh, then we get into our imager. The, the imager on the ladder truck is basically dead. It's lost some seals that will protect it if we ever need it again. So it's on the truck operating right now, but because it is so old, there are nobody that will service that at all. So we think the next time we take it in and use it, that it will probably be destroyed. So the thermal imager on our current ladder truck needs to be replaced. And that's one of those kind of life-saving devices that we go into a fire and that's the thing that lets us see if it's a table in front of us or a person in front of us or where the fire is. So we have one on our three trucks. We don't want to have one on the brush truck. We have one on each engine and then the ladder truck. All right. Then we go to, uh, okay. So number nine is a new topic that I think we should talk about for a couple of minutes. This is, um, providing a new service that we have never provided with the city. Advanced life support. We've never done that. We at our fire department do BLS, basic life support. So if we go to somebody that's having a heart attack, we have some things we can do, but we do not do any medication. We do not do any fluids. We do not do any of the advanced stuff. So this idea is for us to be able to provide that service. And this number that's on here is $30,000, but I went to a meeting on Thursday that that number is way off. I got that number from somebody in the company, but I think they were pricing me a refurbished monitor that won't really work. So that number should be more 65,000, not 30. Yeah, those things aren't cheap. Now they have a lifespan of 10 years. So we should have it for a while, but we need to get over the, get over the idea of ALS if we want to provide that first. So when we get into the budget, you'll see some stuff with asterisk next to it that says ALS. All those items are, if you choose to allow us to do ALS, we would need those things also to do it. The monitor is the big thing. You know, that's a capital improvement plan. So I did some numbers. We at the fire department arrive on scene 80% or better than EMS. Now, some of those times are very quick, you know, a minute, two minutes, five minutes. But some of those times are long. Um, we in the past couple of months have been to somebody 20 minutes before EMS arrived. EMS has nine units in the whole county. So if they have eight patients for one reason or another, you know, in different modes of transport, if one ambulance is going to two, two ambulances has to, and there's four sitting at the hospital waiting for a bed, that only lives one ambulance to cover the whole county. And sometimes we get calls that we are getting ambulances from 66, station 19 or Lake Placid. Every once in a while, we'll get an ambulance from Lake Placid heading up here. So what ALS does is there is a cost associated with it, but ALS gets us responding quicker, not, it doesn't get us responding quicker. That's not the right way to say it. It gets us that have responded quicker with better tools to do something quicker. So we could potentially give them a better outcome.
Does that include training?
Uh, yeah, there, there's a training component in there. So it, okay. So there are two different ways to think about this. It, so we currently have three paramedics that paid for it on their own. Now we get into some slight, I don't want to say negotiations, but there are several ways we could do it. We as a city could, there are several places that do this. We as a city could pay for people to go to school that currently work here. Several places do that. Holt County right now is hiring paramedics. And if you are a paramedic, they'll give you a $10,000 signing bonus. And if you're not a paramedic, they'll hire you with no bonus, but put you through school. So we, we can do that. I, I have not put any of that in because that's sort of borderlining on a negotiation kind of a thing. Now I think it's a good idea. I, I think we have employees over there that have vested time with the city that I think it would be saying, you're here. If you want to do this, we as a city will pay for your schooling. It's roughly $8,000. It's a long time. It's a year of their life to, to do medic school. So there is definitely some investment on their side too. Uh, that's up to you guys, what you want to do with that. I mean, me and Melody can talk about budgeting money to do that. I don't, I don't think that would be an exorbitant amount. If we put two people through school a year, that would be $15,000.
Well, I guess obviously the vitals monitor doesn't do you a whole lot of good unless you're going to do something about the vitals that you're monitoring. So what is your plan to actually treat the people? Are you trying to become a full out ambulance or what?
No. Okay. So ALS, you, there are several places. Most places in fact, do ALS with the fire department, and then the ambulance just shows up to transport and treat from that point. We sort of, I don't want to say do it backwards because we've been doing it this way for years and years, but we have a county run ambulance. So we would arrive on scene and we potentially would have five, 10, 15, 20 minutes of being able to do medication and do advanced life support stuff to stabilize that patient before an ambulance ever arrives to then transport them. We do not want to run an ambulance. We don't want to transport people. We would be ALS non-transport. We would be stabilizing that patient until an ambulance arrived. We would hand everything over to them, all the information, all the stuff they needed, and they would transport them in.
And right now you're not doing it?
Correct. Not the advanced life support part. We show up as a BLS service, basic life support. So we don't do any medications. We don't do any fluids. We don't do any intubation, nothing, none of that kind of stuff.
You clear airways and do CPR?
Correct.
So if we.
Go ahead. That's pretty much it. Clear airways and do CPR.
Yeah. I mean, we, we splint legs. We do first aid type stuff too, but yeah, get vitals. And we can trans, we can pass out on to the people that are coming. So our, I don't want to say our, our biggest benefit, but what we do a lot of is we tell EMS what they're coming into. So when they arrive, they know, oh, we have somebody that's sitting here talking to us. We, we get, when we go to these calls, we will get anything from a difficulty breathing that when you actually arrive, their difficulty breathing is because their cabinets were on fire and they tried to put the fire out. You're like, who in the heck did you get that? You know, so we go to general illness that the person has passed out on the bed. Well, I didn't know. I don't know what's going on with them. So what we do is we get there, we evaluate and assess, we do vitals, and then we can get EMS and say, this is what you have. You have a whatever 57 year old awake and talking to us, or oh, no, we got a 63 year old that we're doing CPR on. And they sort of know what they're coming into.
I could personally verify that.
So if we ha, if we start providing, cause you said the county is the one that provides the EMS services. So if we up our services to include, um, advanced life support, is that something that could become billable to the county? To try to coop some of those, uh, costs?
So the county bills for it no matter what we do. They are going to bill them as an ALS patient, whether we have it or not. If we arrive with that ALS service, they are still going to charge. We can't charge for ALS service because we have a fire assessment. And the county doesn't do that either, but we're nowhere near that. So I've talked to, um, oh man, I'm drawing a blank on his name right now, but the person that does our fire assessment and what was it? Okay. Yeah. Chris Rose, the lawyer there, Peter Napoli, he's the one that was Stan Tech that does our fire assessment. When we get to a hundred percent is the only time that this would come into account. And we can't count certain things. We can't count special pay for being a medic. And we can't count the few thousand dollars we buy in consumables to provide that service. But everything else we can count, but he says you're nowhere near a hundred percent. So it's not even worth discussing now. But what that means is when we five, 10, I mean, I don't think we've ever been at a hundred percent, but if we were to ever get to a hundred percent, we just have to carve out those few thousand dollars and not charge them in the fire assessment.
Yeah.
So they, they do bill, if that answers your question.
Well, I guess before we start down this path at all, I would rather see what that actually entails to get there and what that financially would even look like before you even go that way. I guess this would be my point.
It's all in here. All, there's little asterisks is out through, throughout the whole budget that say, you know, whatever. So I will, what, the two numbers that are incorrect are the monitor, which I, like I said, I had 30, but that's 65. And the other thing that I is negotiable, but I'm sort of roughing it right now is the pay. So there's a line item on here, um, under the other budget that says special pay and it says $10,000. I've just been for easy numbers saying that we're going to give them a, whatever you want to call it. Not, not bonus, but special medic pay of $5,000 a person. And with two people, that gets us 10. But now we technically have three people that are paramedics. So one of them has been saying he didn't want to do it, but he has changed his mind since I put this thing out. So now he's saying he does. So that number, okay. So going back to the training, it, that number will go up depending on how many paramedics we have. So I, I don't, I'm not sure how we got sidetracked on that, or maybe we were dumb, but if we were to do two medics a year, that's roughly $15,000 a year to pay them, then we would have to start paying them pay to be a paramedic. So that number would change. Now I don't, no way do we have, uh, all 18 people that would say, I want to be a paramedic tomorrow. But we could curb that by saying something like, we'll pay for, the city will pay for two based on seniority, length of service, whatever you guys want to do. That's all kind of up to us to decide. We, the city could say, we don't want to pay for any of it.
And when you say a hundred percent, are you saying that all the firefighters would have to be paramedics to be a hundred?
Right. Yeah. I don't think that's happening. You know, I mean, I know uh, a lot of the older members that have been there for 15, 20 years are basically saying, I don't want to go to school for a year. are basically saying, I don't want to go to school for a year of my life to get three years of pay. So that's half of them right there are saying they don't want to do that.
Yeah.
So wouldn't you want to have more than two? I mean, wouldn't you want to have at least one per shift?
Yeah. Yeah. Currently we have three and they're all on different shifts. So yes, ideally, so the plan with this, it, you know, I'd have to create a better plan, but I have a decent plan right now. We have one on each shift. The goal would be to do this 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Now, we cannot do that right now. There is a state statute that allows us to sort of implement this slowly. Meaning, and this is going to sound weird when I say it, but you can be ALS today and not tomorrow. So we've discussed this with the county and the county is sort of on board. We've had several meetings with the county to kind of go over this. Now, I say sort of on board because the, the code that talks about it is a COPCN. So a weird acronym for convenience of public necessity or something like that. But they have the rules that were implemented for ambulance companies that came into the county. Well, ambulance companies that come into the county are backwards of what they're, they're doing. They walk in with 10 paramedics and an ambulance is saying, we want to come in and provide a service tomorrow. We want to make money. We're doing it backwards. We're saying we're here, we're getting there quick. We would like to provide this service. So we're sort of working through all the little pieces of the puzzle to be able to kind of do this backwards. Now, we're, we're getting there, but this is sort of the first step is to see if you guys even want to do it. Then I go to them and say, we have a plan. And then we have to, to pay a fee of $500 to the county to get a COPCN.
But chief, even those that are qualified paramedics, we don't have the equipment to actually put that in use. Like be able to give IV solution to somebody who's dehydrated on the spot.
Right.
Have that equipment, right?
That, that's in here too. When you get down to some of these items, you're going to see ALS with asterisks next to it. So all of those things that are in there, there's like six or seven other little lines. Now, now they're all kind of smaller numbers. So in the study that I've done, it, it appears like the consumables, so the things you're talking about, needles, IV bags, stuff like that. I'm calling those consumables. That seems like it's around $2,000 to $3,000 a year is what we're going to use. I don't know a good number, but what I have is that EMS in the city limits use roughly $6,000 in the city limits for a whole year. Well, they're also transporting, so they're using more consumables while they're driving. So I took basically half of that number and said, I think we're going to use about half. Now, it probably, it could be less, you know? If they get out of there quicker, they could be using more and we're using less. So a rough number of $3,000 for those consumables is in here somewhere. Did that answer your, somebody asked a question that I don't really remember if I answered at this point.
You answered mine.
I, I think about the idea of three people. Yeah. So the idea is we have one person on each shift. We would be able to provide this service. I'm, I'm sort of winging a number of, of 70 to 80% because they all have Kelly days, they all have vacations, stuff like that. So right now we would provide this service, generally speaking, all day, every day, until one of them is on vacation, sick day, Kelly day, all that kind of stuff. But like you're saying, the goal would be two, three, four, or five years down the road would be to be hiring medics or training some more people to be a medic. So we would have two, potentially three on a shift. So we would never not have a medic. We would be able to do this all the time.
Yep. So we're not actually, we don't have a copy of the actual fire budget. All we have is the capital improvements. We don't have all these asterisk items that you're talking about.
Gotcha. Okay.
I don't know what page it is.
So would they do this, I'm sorry to interrupt you, would they do this, would they work and go to school on their off days?
Okay. So well, so this, all this is decisions we can make, but there are two ways to do it. It is a, what's called a shift friendly class. Now, shift friendly, I'm proposing, we do it what would be considered not shift friendly. Shift friendly means you go to work on Monday and Thursday is your shift. And they're going to have a class on a Monday and Thursday. But we don't have that many people. So I'm proposing they work Monday and then they go to school on Tuesday. And then they show back up and work on Thursday, and then they just go to school on Friday. So it definitely would be hard on them. But this is part of what we can kind of negotiate. You know, the, the union is going to have a input on this at some point.
Well, we've got 30 minutes left.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven.
And she's saying she didn't put the asterisks on there, so I'll just go through and tell you which ones are which. So hold on, when she finds me the page, I'll be able to see what you're looking at a little better. Here it is. Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm going to do it a different way. Oh, okay. So yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't, I don't see stuff like that on here, but okay, so on here, I have, like I said, this number's a little off, but $15,000, this, this is a negotiable item. $15,000 for pay. And that's $5,000 for three people. So that would be a reoccurring cost. Okay, then another reoccurring cost is the reporting program to do it. We currently don't have it. We need a special reporting program to do this. That is $6,000 a year.
And that was a recording?
Reporting.
Reporting, oh.
Yeah. It's a special program that the county also has. So when we input information, it can just be electronically sent to them and documented everything properly. Then we also have a, a maintenance cost to maintain that monitor, the $65,000 monitor. We have a, a proposed contract of $2,000 a year that would maintain that, that monitor. Now, it has to be tested and serviced yearly, but that $2,000 goes into all that. Now, if it were to be dropped and broke, that $2,000 contract would fix it. That's kind of an all-inclusive maintenance that keeps it running no matter what. And if it does break, they give you a loaner one to use. Because we're not, we're not trying to buy two of these. We can in the future, but at $65,000, we're trying to do it at one right now.
You, chief, you said that was monthly or yearly?
Yearly, $2,000 a year. I, I might've said monthly. You can correct me. It's $2,000 a year though. Okay, then we have. Then we have the consumables, like I said, is, it says 2,000 on here, but it could be two to three. I don't know. So two to $3,000 consumables, that's medication, IVs, needles, all that kind of stuff.
You think you're only going to use 2,000 in a whole year for medications?
Yeah, we, we think, we got a whole list, like I said, of every call that was ALS considered in the city limits. And the county used $6,000 total.
For their EMS?
Yeah.
Really?
For EMS. So we don't, we think we're going to use half of that, maybe a little less. Cause we're only on scene for a few minutes with it. They're transporting, doing more stuff. You know, give me more medication, give me more fluids. So, so.
So an example of the medication that you'd be administering would be what?
Okay. Yeah, yeah. IV for fluids.
Might give morphine, might give them pressors, might give them all sorts of things.
Okay, so that is a good one because we are not talking about doing narcotics.
Okay.
Because when we get into narcotics, we get into a timeframe. So generally speaking, EMS is there within five to 10 minutes, very easily, five to 10 minutes. There is a lot of stuff going on, but it is, it was considered with us and the county when we talked that very minimal, they were like two times in, in the whole county do we think actual narcotics needed to be given within the first few minutes? So when you open the idea of narcotics, you open the idea of narcotics being stolen or all kinds of other stuff. The DEA is involved. It opens a whole lot. So we and the county agrees that we shouldn't be doing narcotics at this point.
What about Narcon?
Narcan?
Narcan, yeah, we can do that.
Like.
Now?
You do that now, don't you?
We do not do that right now. I know there's one sitting right here. We're working on doing that right now, but we don't do that right now. But yeah, that would be one.
You do Epi now?
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
We do not, but that would be one that we would get.
Or glucose.
So yeah, or glucose, all that kind of stuff. Yeah. I mean, we go to people all the time with blood sugar issues. And we basically stand there and hope that nothing happens till EMS gets there. We explain to them what they're doing, the situation they're in, their condition they're in, get the door ready, get all the, get some vitals that we can and get them prepared for when they show up. And then we help them put the bag together and give them all this other stuff to get them out of their coma.
In 15, 20 minutes is, you know, it's that could be somebody's life.
Yeah. We, in the past two months, we were on scene for 20 minutes before they arrived.
And chief, I got a question. In, in the medical field, 20 minutes could be life or death, right? So you just said that you talked with the county and y'all decided that you did not want to do the narcotics, right?
Correct.
So, but would you have the privilege to do it if need be?
No, we wouldn't even have it in our truck. Now, the, the other, the other difference is when we're doing this talking. So part of this COPCN means that we have to get signed off by the county. Our medics have to be signed off by the county because the county is the one tasked with EMS transport. So not a big deal. We all have the same medical director, so that's not a big deal. But the idea is when they arrive, so currently, th- this is some kind of behind the scenes stuff that most people don't know. But when, when they have a bad incident, they call for a second ambulance. Now, remember, we only have nine in the whole county. We might have two of them in the city of Oak Park for one person because they want a second medic here. So us being, having a medic on scene would help that also. Because me, two medics are there right now. Sometimes they arrive on scene and say, oh, I need somebody else to help and they'll call for another person. The, the best idea that we try to do in emergency services is, this is going to sound maybe bad when I say, but everybody you can, and then when you figure out what you have, back people off. You know, you want to get the, the situation under control as quickly as you can. So if we can have two medics there fast and then say, oh, well, we don't really need a second one. We can let people go. But when we get there and say, oh man, I really need more help, you know, that's the situations we don't like to be in.
So in all your talks with the county, has anybody ever brought up getting additional EMS trucks? Since we only have nine for the county?
They've talked about it for years. They, they are still trying to talk about it. I think their fire assessment is going to allow them to get another one. I, I don't know. I really don't know their budget on where they are with buying more ambulances. That's been a discussion for years, so.
The Sun and Lake Fire Department is, it's its own little district, right? That belongs to Sun and Lake.
Sun and Lakes is the county.
Oh, it is.
So yeah, that station's seven in the county. So they, a couple of years ago, I think it's five years ago now, they took every volunteer department in the county and consolidated them to a county fire rescue. Now, there are still, like Station One is still operated as a volunteer station. Nobody's based out of there, but that one in Sun and Lakes, they built and it is a county station. So there are paid people there all the time. So we have two units in the city of Oak Park because we're pretty busy. Two EMS units in the city of Oak Park, and then we have another one in Sun and Lakes. All right. So I was going through my numbers. The only other number that I have is $2,000 for some minor equipment that's not reoccurring. So we have roughly $15,000 for people. And then we have roughly six, seven, eight, nine, $10,000. Most of that is that reporting software. $6,000 for reporting, $2,000 for the monitor contract, and then roughly two to three for consumables.
Yeah, 15 for the pay.
Yeah, 15 for pay and then those few things, those are the reoccurring. So roughly.
$25,000.
Yeah. Now, now that can change with how many people we have are medics. That's really, I mean, I don't want to say that's the only one that could change, but consumables shouldn't change that much. The contract shouldn't change that much.
And the $65,000 for the vital monitor, that's the biggest chunk of change.
Yeah. That's like the key to the whole thing.
How long did you say that lasts?
They're saying it has a lifespan of eight years, but they're also saying we have numbers of people that do it, keep it longer than eight years.
Wouldn't you need one on multiple vehicles?
Well, when we, maybe when we get two, three, four, or five years down the road and we have multiple medics, but we only have one medic, you know, on each shift. So the, the idea would be five years down the road, when we can get multiple medics on each truck, then yes, they would each, they would, each truck would need its own. Now, that would probably be two. We wouldn't have a monitor sitting on the truck.
Sure.
So if, if we were to, you know, let's say they were on the brush truck today and had the monitor. If, if the brush truck were to break down, we would move that bag and monitor over to the other truck. So yeah, I could see in five years, I would be coming back, maybe me, and saying, okay, we think we've grown enough that we would like a second monitor.
Yeah.
But right now the idea is that contract would get us a backup if ours broke.
As the implications been explored as far as the liability of potential, somebody giving somebody the wrong thing, getting sued?
Yes and no. I've asked the question Denise. I'm not sure where we are with it. I don't, I don't think we've gotten an answer back with insurance yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we posed a question to the insurance to, to tell us if we need to underwrite it because it is a broader scope of what they'd be doing and responsible for for liability. So we're waiting to hear back.
So I mean, I think I would like a honest opinion of what is the likelihood that we would ever get to a point where you could bill for these services?
I, I don't know if we can. I don't know. That's a good question I can ask.
Or if we can't bill the residents, what about like a subsidy from the county if we're providing?
Well, somehow, some way.
Not necessarily billing the people like the EMS does, but if we're providing a service for the county, them providing some kind of a supplemental.
Right.
Pay.
Yeah, I think, I, while I agree with what you're saying, I think their stance is, well, we're providing the service. We don't care if you do it or not. I, I don't know though. I can ask. It's not going to hurt to ask.
That was a nice way to put it.
Yeah. Well, maybe present it to them, like you said, where they wouldn't have to call a second truck because you would be there.
Right.
Cutting down on their costs.
Sure. They're just passing the savings on.
Yeah, they're, they're aware of that, but I don't know where that will go.
Okay. All right. So we'll put that down as a maybe for now. Does that seem fair?
It's, it's in the, in the budget currently labeled as, well, when she, I guess when, if she'll give you an updated one that will say ALS next to it. Mine, mine says that. So yeah, it's in there that you can cut it out later if you guys decide. Sounds like you can't make a decision tonight anyway.
Okay.
I, I'd like to move forward. I, I'm not a maybe, I'm a yes, if that makes a difference.
Okay. We got 19 minutes left. What else can we do?
Oh, we're going to finish mine. I'm not sure what's, oh, I got to go through this list. Okay, your computer turned off on me. Okay, so we already discussed confined space ladder truck, we already discussed that. The monitor, the, okay, we read that. So then, do you want me to go through what I'm looking for next year in the capital improvement plan? Or do you want me to skip the pickup truck? Our pickup truck is, I think, a 2003. It's 20 something years old. It's just kind of running poorly at this point. It just came back from getting fixed. It still runs. I just put it in the budget for next year. It's also kind of biggest problem is it's sort of incapable of pulling that big trailer. It does it, but you know, you know, there's a trailer behind you when you're pulling it. So this is a bigger, better truck to pull that big trailer if we need to. Pulls the boat fine, that big trailer is just pretty big. So that's the pickup truck for next year. Then we have the tablets. So the tablets aren't, they're, they're needed for a couple of different reasons. One of them would be ALS, but one of them, a more important is why they were put in here originally is for the fact that everything is on a computer in the cloud at this point. So whenever we arrive on scene, we arrive on scene with these huge books of diagrams of buildings that we may need to know 10 different hazards on this building. And these tablets were put in the, in, in the improvement plan to buy those tablets to be able to access what we call a pre-fire plan. So when we pull up, we could access these pre-fire plan with this information about every building. That's what those are for. Then Opticom, I think we talked about a couple of times. This is that system that will turn a light green if we're driving in the direction with our emergency lights on. This was put in the capital improvement plan for that main street that's talking about going to one lane. I don't know if that's ever going to happen, but that's what it's putting here for. If that ever happens, I feel like there's going to be a problem at Main and Lake where cars are going to be backed up and we're going to be stuck behind eight cars. So Opticom is a system that will change that light to green for us in an emergency. The new fire station, I'll just go ahead and say, I think that number's probably wrong. I have engineers, Cool and Cobb, trying to give me a rough number. I put that number in there sort of as a placeholder, but I think it's low. But that goes into just the growth. I mean, we're, we're, this whole thing, we're talking about putting those lines to where the city is and we may be annexing, we may have growth currently. Currently we have that new development twin lakes of 300 something homes. We have another one down by memorial that's 700 homes. We have another one by uh, that RV place off Davis Citrus Homes is another 300. We have roughly 4,000 housing units in the city of Avon Park right now. We're talking about adding roughly 1,500 down there. And then when you add 600 at Crystal Lake, which is our longest run, it'll take us eight, nine, 10 minutes to get to Crystal Lake. That's 2,000 homes. That's borderline 50% of our housing units are south of Twin Lakes. So my, again, this is the future, but my sort of proposal is to build a second station down off Davis Citrus Road. So that's what that 1.5 million, which I think is a low number. I'll say again. Then we have another new engine in five years. And that's just replacing our other engine that will be roughly, I don't know, 12 years old at that point. We could push that off a year or two, but that sort of lines up with the station being built. You know, we're not going to want um, a 25 year old truck in that station. So we're going to need to kind of look at, we have another station opening. We need another truck to go there. So that kind of lines up with that. Any questions?
Yeah. When you retire, chief?
Well, I reached my age in three years.
Three?
Yep. October, I don't know what year, 24, 27, October 2027. Now I would like to do the drop. So I have eight years, hopefully. I have a daughter in high school still. So anywhere between three and eight. If everything works out.
Okay. Any other questions on that portion? Seeing none. Got nine minutes left. Might as well use them.
Oh, keep going. Keep going.
Yeah, just uh, because of the time, I'll just go over the 24, 25, what we have here. So this is uh, in, in last year's, you know, in the five year CIP, what we, what we pushed forward is the the mower replacement program. So we're doing that again. So we have to, we, we replace our riding mowers. They, they take a, a lot of punishment. So they're out there. That'll give us either two medium quality ones or one really good mower. So that we're up in the air on that. Uh, the, for the F250 diesel aluminum flatbed, 62,000. That's a 2007 trucks getting replaced. The one, the one beneath that is a 2011. And the other one's a 2014. So we have 17 year old truck, 13 year old truck and a 11 year old truck. Or actually 10 year old truck getting replaced. Uh, that's where you see the F250, the two F250s and F150. Now the fleet air compressors are uh, desire the mechanics with our larger scaled uh, um, trucks with the, with the garbage truck tires, the front, the front tires are pretty large and they requested another air compressor. We're currently just running. We have two, but we're running on one and we, we, they like, uh, they really requested that we get that one. Uh, the AC machine for the mechanics, whenever they do an AC, try to do anything with AC, they can't really do it because they have to be able to capture the freon. They just can't let it loose. So this way they'll be able to perform some of the jobs, maybe some of the smaller jobs and get the trucks back out there on the road. Especially with the garbage trucks, it's super hot. Um, you know, it's probably my biggest complaint during the summer. Uh, and, and the goal is to get that going for them. Uh, the tire changing machine is they're, they're doing it with a tire bar and a hammer. And that's, that's difficult. The amount of tires, I, I give it to the mechanics. They, they're, they're hard workers. They, they, they they replace a lot of tires and a tire machine would help out things greatly. It's more efficient and probably save on some workers comp claims. Uh, next slide. You want to go to the next slide?
I want to talk to you about, I've number one, the street improvements.
Okay.
I think we're way behind the ball trying to get our streets approved. Even I, I mean, I know we have a list of so many that are needed first activity, first repair already, but I, I wouldn't be surprised if we needed put a lot more into that department to uh, the longer we wait, the worse the streets are going to be. And then all of a sudden, you're going to be number 10 on a list of five streets to be fixed and nobody wants to drive down that street because it's unsafe. Cause I just think that's something we should look at seriously.
I, I agree because you know, we got streets in order according to the conditions, right? I mean, sometimes they're taking a little long to get done. And so therefore I think that there should be more put into our streets to keep them all up and looking good, you know, around about the same time. And not only that, I wanted to talk about number five to eight, I'm sorry, five to seven. Didn't we order quite a bit of vehicles last year? Are these vehicles needed? Or we just ordered them because they are old?
No, they're needed. The, the old vehicles are, they're getting bad. So I mean, that's most, I mean, many of the cities I've been in, it's unservice body trucks are about eight years and then regular trucks are, you know, five years. I understand it's different. But I mean, 17 years on the trucks, a long time for a city truck and their, their miles get up there and they start having problems. So two of them are ser- service vehicles and the other one's a pickup truck. So this kind of, I mean, we're, we're getting about as much as we can out of these vehicles before we're, we're putting them in to replace them.
So you're saying that all of them is giving you problems now? I, I mean.
That's exactly what I'm saying. When they come up, this is, this was already pushed from the, the, the backend plus we're having many more vehicles. I mean, even some of them, when, when we replace them, just due to the staff changes, sometimes we end up even trying to get a little bit more out of them before we send them off to auction. But uh, just our staffing, we're already short vehicles. We have uh, staff, staff in uh, in the department. So some, some areas were short vehicles right now.
Back on the streets, did uh, we get a report of what our street conditions? I thought we had some.
It's massive. It's uh, the street are uh, trying to see the name of the, the thing. It's, it's vehicle, it's a, it's a condition of our, of our roads. It says it's, it's okay. It, you know, it's poor condition, good condition. You know, uh, ex, you know, extremely bad condition. And us, I seen the report and I looked at some of the roads and actually Jared was mentioning that today. Some of the ones that looked at to be designated a certain way are extremely poor. Sometimes we look at, it's not necessarily extreme. We seen others that are worse. So we went out there identifying and trying to see exactly what we can do. We did have that backlog of, of POs. I think it was in here stated, um, almost said it was 28 POs. We're able to knock out the majority of those POs. So um, we've added some additional jobs, but those also included, it was sidewalks, stormwater and, and street jobs. Now we're out there looking, I'm, we're, we're putting together to get this, the, the money identified, to get some bigger lengths and then do some of the like uh, like Lake Avenue, but of some of the other areas on our, our northern side. And as well as some on further on the south that, that we have issues. So we're, I put a big map up in our, in our hallway in the public works facility and we just identify the roads as we go along, we, we highlight them a certain color. And then we take a look at it and we bring in the gentleman that we have the continuing services contract with uh, uh, excavation point. Then we go over it and we'd tell them to give us a price and we set it up. But usually they're like, let's say a month, month and a half out on some of their jobs, but they're, we're moving along now. Now we're able to get it's, it's a little bit of getting them to do the work, but also that we identified and ensured what we had is what we had and just we've, I told you, we've been, we've been short. So if I didn't have a, a public work supervisor, we didn't really have much the, the, the form in there. So now we do, and we're able to start moving along, getting some of these things anchored.
Do you feel the 500,000 is, is adequate or?
Yeah, I, I feel, I feel it's adequate. Um, we can get a good amount done. I, I mean, we can, we can push it more, but I, I think that's a significant amount. Let's see how we are. Cause we, we may have some carry forward from this year and, and going into next year. So there, there may be some POs to get put in place. And then that money's there. And then as we go along, we may be able to get almost a, just say a million dollars worth of work, but a, 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 a large amount of work done.
I, I got a question, mayor. Um, I'm back to Jason. Jason, number um, six. How many Ford F250 diesels do we have right now?
I, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Really? You come in and asking for a vehicle and you don't know how many we have already?
Not, not, not that number off the top of my head.
And Jason, I don't want you to think I'm getting on you, but last year we ordered a, and they, everybody sitting here would agree. We ordered a lot of vehicles. Now you coming back before us telling us that we don't have enough, you know, for our employees. I'm, I, I was under the impression, the amount that we ordered, you know, even the older ones, they got, you know, bumped down to the, I guess the lower subordinates of employees. I was under the impression last year, we had ordered quite a bit of vehicles that we wouldn't have to be coming back and looking at vehicles again this year.
And I, I recognize that. And that's why you see, like, if you look at the budget on, look at 25, look at 25, 26, there's, I don't have any vehicles that other than the, the aerial lift that you see up there, but I don't have any other pickup trucks because I, I do recognize that fact that we've been ordering a lot of vehicles. This was in the capital plan, but I said, 2007 trucks, 17 year old truck. It's, it's, it, it needs to get replaced. We have, we have people that are asking for trucks and I'm putting them off and saying, hey, just it's working like our mechanic, hey, it's working. Just ride it out. You're a mechanic, you know, you're, you're more in the shop, but they run out and they get parts. So like, you know, they ask me for stuff, but I, I recognize that it's steward of the public dollar, but that's, you know, that's a 17 year old, that truck that you just mentioned, 17 years old. That's a long time.
Okay. All right. Well, unfortunately that concludes our time. So we'll have to reconvene us at a future date. Appreciate everyone for their presentations and questions. Is there anything else for the special budget meeting? Seeing none. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no objections, we are adjourned.
For everyone on Zoom, we're going to close this meeting. You'll have to re-log in for city council.
We'll take a five minute break.